Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of March 11th, 2020. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. I see we have some students from CGB runners, runners up. All right, well, thank you so much for being here. And renegades, where are you? Thank you for being here. Hope you gain a lot out of tonight's wonderful meeting, but we always appreciate it when our students are here. And tonight, we actually have a very special person with us. So, tonight is Mr. Christian Clegg, our new city manager's first meeting. So, welcome, welcome, welcome to Bakersfield, California. You're gonna love it here. Mr. Clegg, what I've noticed already about you is that you are a collaborator, and it's been very obvious just in the time that we've spent together. You're also very community-minded, and we really, really appreciate that. But I needed another "C," and the word is "cool" because you had the insight to choose Bakersfield, California, where we have The Sound of Something Better. So, welcome. We are so delighted to have you here, and go ahead and make some welcoming comments to yourself and to us.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, thank you very much. I am very honored and humbled to be in this role. I think this may be the first time professionally I've been called "cool," but I am very community-oriented. I am very much about collaboration. I've been very impressed with the commitment that this community has to itself and the commitment the employees have to this community, and so I am very excited to be part of an organization that cares and works hard for their community. And I have young kids. My wife and I have almost 18 years, have three young kids, and we're very excited to make Bakersfield our home. It is The Sound of Something Better for us. It's a hard-working, family-friendly community, and I just want to thank all those who have been very welcoming to me. Bakersfield has lived up to its reputation as a very welcoming community, and so I've been very well received, and I'm excited to get to work.
Thank you, and welcome. Yeah, that would be appropriate. You'll be singing The Sound of Something Better. Tonight, because we keep hearing about the coronavirus, I thought it would be helpful to have a little update before we actually get into the heart of the meeting. And I've invited Matt Constantine, who's the Director of Kern County Public Health, and he's brought his colleague, Kimberly Hernandez, and they're gonna share a little bit before we actually get started. Thank you so much, Mr. Constantine, for being here.
Mayor, thank you, and City Council members. I'm gonna just defer quickly to Kim Hernandez. She oversees our disease control program within public health to give you a current, as-of-the-hour, status update on the coronavirus, and then I'm gonna just speak briefly after her about what we are doing to prepare and to respond to this new public health threat.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council members. Thanks for having us here this evening. As you all know, the situation with the Coronavirus Disease 2019, what we now call COVID-19, continues to evolve rapidly both abroad and here in the United States. As of this morning, March 11th, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reported 938 cases in the United States, including 29 deaths. An additional 49 cases have been reported in persons repatriated into the United States. The California Department of Public Health has reported 150 cases in California, including two deaths. We have no confirmed cases here in Kern County. We do continue to receive notification of persons who meet federal criteria for follow-up and assess those returning travelers. We have been notified of 23 travelers so far, and we continue to monitor nine individuals as the other 14 have either not needed monitoring or their 14-day monitoring period has concluded. The symptoms of COVID-19 include fever and respiratory symptoms such as cough or shortness of breath. As we have not identified any cases here in Kern County, we continue to ask our healthcare providers to assess for known risks, such as travel to an area that has been affected by COVID-19, or direct contact with a confirmed case. We also continue to encourage our healthcare providers to test for other causes of respiratory illness like flu, since flu is still widespread throughout California. There is no vaccine for the virus that causes COVID-19, and there is no proven effective antiviral treatment at this time. Medical care is mostly supportive. With that said, it is possible for people to recover at home without medical intervention. The report from the World Health Organization noted that 80% of people had mild to moderate illness. Thus, we expect to see a range of severity with COVID-19, similar to the way we see a range of severity of illness with flu. Some people have a short course of illness and recover quickly. Others have more severe illness and will need to seek medical care. The infection prevention measures that we talk about this time of year apply to COVID-19. Wash your hands, use hand sanitizer if you can't wash your hands, avoid touching your face, limit your contact with ill people, stay home if you are ill, cover your cough or your sneeze, and stay in overall good health. These are all things that we can each do to protect ourselves and our community.
So, because of this new threat, we have instituted a public health task force. We've deployed that. We've reallocated a number of key individuals that Kim helps lead. We've activated our Department of Operations Center so that we all focus on this new issue. We have augmented our 911 dispatch system so that we now assess and screen all calls for potential signs of COVID-19 and their exposure history, so that this provides notification to the first responders of potential cases before they actually go into the home. As Kim mentioned, we have a CDC monitoring program so that we go out to individuals that may have been exposed and help them self-monitor and report in any early signs of illness. We've developed a robust communication plan. We have a brand-new webpage that has current information. We do daily social media posts. We have an aggressive hand-wash billboard campaign going. We actually met with all the news directors in the county to try to provide the most up-to-date and transparent method to get the information out. That has resulted in we do twice-a-week briefings and three-day-a-week recordings that we post online for the media. We are in daily contact with all of the healthcare providers through our health bulletins so that it provides the most updated guidance on how to test and what to screen for. We have met and continue to meet with all of our first responders, fire, sheriff, ambulance providers, cities, all different types, to ensure that we are aware and prepared. We've met with a lot of community organizations to develop response plans, from the colleges, Cal State Bakersfield, Bakersfield College, Superintendent of Schools, the homeless shelters, to ensure that they have plans in place to mitigate any potential concerns. I will tell you that there are some pending items that we're still working on. The state continues to issue new guidance documents. This Saturday, they came out with some very strong guidance documents for schools, what to do in case there is a positive case in a school, and what to do with community events or mass gathering events, to try to ensure that we protect the public. I will also tell you, another pending item is we have staffing concerns. As the state has established guidelines for what to do if an infected person comes into a hospital and the staff are not wearing the appropriate personal protective equipment, we have to exclude them from work. So, we have a number of groups of people that are on that holding pattern to see if somebody develops or is further tested. We've had some recent examples where that has really affected our staffing. So, the community needs to know, as Kim mentioned, simple protective measures that we should do always for all respiratory illness. Wash your hands often. Limit your hand contact with unclean surfaces. Limit touching hands with others. Limit touching your face and your mouth. When you're sick, stay home. Avoid work, avoid school when you're sick. Avoid family and friends when you're sick. And cover your cough or your sneeze. The CDC has given some good guidance about a six-foot separation, so avoiding people that are sick. Generally, a six-foot distance would diminish your risk of communicating COVID-19 and other respiratory illnesses dramatically. Mayor, that concludes our set comments. We certainly are here for any questions you or the council may have.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for Mr. Constantine or Ms. Hernandez? You've answered everything, but I'm gonna come down. Sophie, you'll stay there. We're here to be proactive, and thank you so much for all of the information you have shared and your being so proactive in our community. Bakersfield, Kern County, we want to be on the forefront. We don't want to wait until it's too late. And so, I'm happy to issue the following proclamation. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield has officially proclaimed the City of Bakersfield as a handshake-free city to proactively protect and safeguard the health and safety of our community and to establish preventative measures for Bakersfield and Kern County so that we may all enjoy the Sound of Something Better. It's my honor to present this to you, Mr. Constantine, and that's what it means. So, that is the recommended way of greeting for this period. Mr. Constantine and I talked about this, and just in the abundance of caution, whatever we can do to be out there and just make sure that we are going to be as proactive in protecting our community. There is no need for panic. That is clearly something, a message we don't want to share. I've had the opportunity to talk with our educators, also Superintendent of Schools, Mary Barlow, and we do not want, as a community, to send that message of panic. We just want to be proactive. Wash hands frequently, greet each other appropriately, and we will do the right thing. So, I know we can count on all of us in Bakersfield and Kern County. Thank you again. Thank you very much. So, next, on our agenda, we will have the invocation, and I see Pastor Freddie Thomas, you have walked in, so you're back there. We're gonna have you come up here in just a minute. Jerusalem Mission Community Church of God in Christ, thank you so much for hosting the MLK Community Initiative, where people are trying to pour resources into the MLK Community Corridor, and you've been hosting those. So, thank you so much. If you can begin to make your way down. And while you're doing that, before I introduce our person who is going to be leading us in the pledge, there's a math question. Tom and a friend split 5/6 of a pizza evenly. What fraction of a pizza did each person get?
5/12.
Aiden, you are the man. And Aiden, we get to have the privilege of having Aiden Petty, a sixth grader from Cato Middle School, who's gonna lead us in the pledge. He's a member of the Cato Middle School Math Bowl Team that won first place in the Bakersfield City School District's 34th Annual Math Bowl, and it includes events such as problem-solving team round, dynamic duo, superstar and relays. Over 250 students, elementary and middle school, participated, and Aiden captured a wonderful honor in the superstar event where there were over 50 questions, 4.0 GPA, and a member of Project Lead the Way program. He tutors other students in math, and he wants to be a physicist. So, at this time, Pastor Thomas, would you please come down? And then, following that, Aiden, if you would just lead us in the pledge, please. Would you all please stand?
Our Father and our God, we come humbly before Your throne of grace. We thank You for Your mercy and for Your kindness. We pray, God, that You will look upon us. We thank You for these officers that have been selected to guide our city. We pray that You will give them and endow them with wisdom and understanding, and grant us Your divine protection, for we know that all power is in Your hand. Bless our elected officials. Bless our city. Rebuke the hand of the enemy and reclaim victory over violence, and we take authority. We bind their hands of Satan everywhere. We pray, God, that You will give them the wisdom and understanding to lead this city and take care of Your constituents, and You direct their path. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Thomas. Aiden?
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Aiden, stay there just for a minute. I have a certificate for you to take back to school. Give it up for Aiden. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn your phones off. In keeping with council policy, council members can't send or receive electronic communication during meetings. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but isn't allowed at other times, and for safety reasons, no sound signs are allowed in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Public statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. How many do we have, Madam Clerk?
We have received three speaker cards, all on separate subjects.
Thank you. At this time, for public statements, all statements are given. A three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, but due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. However, the council can refer your matter to staff and request that staff contact you. They can refer it to committee and request that staff follow up with you. If you're here to speak on hearing item 10A, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity when that item is called later in the meeting. So, at this time, would you please call the first public speaker?
Phil LaQuapetti.
Thank you, Mayor Go.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Clegg. Welcome. This is concerning SB 1. Urgently request for the south side of Oleander on the south side of Brundage. SB 1 is now paving Hughes Lane and Brundage, Hughes Lane off of Brundage. My house goes up and butts up to Highway 58, so it would be on the south side of Brundage. Urgently request you, the road is in complete disarray. There is a dental office on the corner of Brundage and Oleander. The other side is rental wheel. Now, the thing that, the road is completely unmanageable. It is completely full of potholes. We used to be part of the Oleander Sunset Division, okay, from Terrace Way before the freeway came in. There is ruts and holes. I have seen H Street completely rip out curbs and put new curbs in where there's no need for that. On the other side, down on Roosevelt Street, where Oleander bumps into 58, I've witnessed people in wheelchairs not being able to cross over into the dental office. It is very terrible. I feel that we're being overlooked in some way. I've sent letters to Mrs. Mayor Go's office, Mr. Gonzalez, who I campaigned for you, and this is very, very terrible. I think it's a terrible thing to be in the Sunset-Oleander area. Also, at the house at Roosevelt and Oleander, there's a bus stop, which I have a copy of right here, and last night, I measured a water puddle that was 19 feet by 7 feet at where the bus comes to pick up kids. So, they had to go to the other side of the street to let them off. Maybe I'm looking for something, maybe I can answer, an answer, or something more. I mean, I've sent letters to the street divisions, to everyone. So, I guess I'm looking for an answer to what I should go with next.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to follow up with you in the interim. Nick, if someone from your team can follow up with him right now, I'd appreciate it, but we can talk after this meeting. I'd be more than happy to do so.
Okay, I appreciate it. And where I live, my house faces 58 freeway from H Street, between H and Hughes, and that's really, all I have is a chain-link fence. That's not the battle here I have right now. But, the street that is coming off of Brundage, which is Oleander still, is very terrible, and that's my fight. So, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next speaker, please.
Anna Laven. Hi, everyone. My name is Anna Laven, and I wanted to introduce myself, as I am the newly-appointed Executive Director of the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative. And I know that later on your agenda today, you'll be approving the collaborative as a nonprofit for your list, so I wanted to thank you and really give thanks in a number of ways. One is for the leadership that the city council has provided on addressing issues of homelessness in establishing the nonprofit, helping to support and fund the nonprofit, the partnership that you have been giving to the providers in our community and the business owners in particular, the lending of staff in particular. We have Jackie Kitchen, who I've already had the opportunity to meet with, a number of staff to talk through that. She also sits on the executive board, as does Mr. Clegg, who I'm hoping that I'll have the opportunity to meet with again as you get settled in to Bakersfield and Kern County. And I certainly would also like to say that, of course, with the establishment of the city shelter that's being built and will be opening later this year, I am so thankful and lucky to know that the nonprofit is starting on a very good foundation, and so I'm looking forward to focusing items like continuing to work on that comprehensive strategic goals to address homelessness, leveraging important resources, and then, of course, providing that technical assistance to our providers who so desperately need some additional support as well. So, I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and I wanted to let you know that my door is always open, always interested in hearing more from you as you're working with your constituents in your particular wards as well. And of course, I should also mention that there are a number of other members of the executive board for the nonprofit here in the room. I saw Lewis Gill, as well as Stephen Pels, who's the chair. So, again, I just want to thank you and introduce myself in this new role. I'm looking forward to moving forward and developing from that good foundation and continuing to do this work and just really dive into addressing and ending homelessness in our community. So, thank you, and I welcome to reach out anytime.
Thank you, Ms. Laven. We appreciate it. Welcome aboard. We have something really unique in our community. I was up in Sacramento with the other big city mayors, and we have a collaboration in our community that doesn't exist everywhere else, our city, county, nonprofits, all collaborating together. And as I heard my fellow mayors, that is not always the case in their community, so we are really blessed here, and thank you again, and looking forward to your leadership.
Yes, thank you as well.
Next speaker, please.
Phil Rudnick.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members, staff. Before I begin, I want to mention to our new city manager that four score and seven years ago, in about nine months, I arrived at the Mercy Hospital. So, we have 87 years' distance, but based on what I hear, you're gonna fix that gap, and you're gonna catch right up with everything that we've been doing for the last decades around here. Welcome to Bakersfield. Secondly, my primary purpose of being here was to offer a service. You may or may not have it. I don't know. If you do, wonderful. If you don't, we have a, I'd like to have these passed out if I could.
Sure, give them to the city clerk, please, Mr. Rudnick.
Is that permissible for me to call?
Yes, it is.
That just gives you a little bit of an idea of a new initiative that we've started here in Bakersfield. Our company always has one pledge. Whatever we do, it's always with community in mind. And so, tonight, I would like to let you know that we have developed a complete multimedia podcast and videocast studio at our Upstart Village, and we are offering that complimentary to agencies of the city. If you need something like that for purposes of having meetings and live-streaming it outside or within the county so that we don't have to have more travelers in and out, that would probably increase the risk of this COVID-19 that we're all concerned with. That's primarily what I came here for, and if anyone has that interest or need, please give us a call. Secondly, I have a great idea. I hope that you share it with me. You know, we feel that the rescue pets that we have to provide for in the city here and the county, they deserve a home just like the homeless deserve a home. And so, we are planning to put on what we call the Parade of Pets. We have a garden area in the Stockdale area where we're located, and consequently, because of that and the time, what we would like to do is encourage the homeless community to serve as, working with the rescued pets, and have a pet parade at our garden that we will livestream and offer to the community. Hopefully, we will get everybody off of the streets and out of the shelters.
Thank you, Mr. Rudnick. We appreciate your coming forward. Your time is up, but we would love to hear about your ideas at another time. Thank you very much.
When you tell me my time is up, I'm 87 years old. Are you talking about tonight?
No. Captain Kindness, you have many years ahead.
All right, thank you.
So, thank you for being here. And we appreciate your efforts also in highlighting kindness. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar, items 8A through 8AI for approval.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from an item? Does any council member wish to remove an item? Does any council member wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 8A through 8AI as an item for approval.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side is allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly so others may speak. We'll hear statements first from those opposed to the staff's recommendation. Then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on, and at the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating that your time is up and quickly end your statements. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to all who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So please be concise and avoid repeating the remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Hearing items A. Housing Authority of the County of Kern, 22nd Street Lofts Affordable Housing Project. Item number one, resolution approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee for the purposes, purpose of financing the construction of 20 multifamily units of affordable housing and certain other matters relating thereto. And item number two, indemnification agreement between the city and the Housing Authority of the County of Kern.
Thank you. Mr. Boyle or Mr. Clegg? Either one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. As noted, tonight, we have what's oftentimes called a Tefra hearing in support of approving issuance of bonds for the financing of 27th Street Lofts project. For reference, the 27th Street Lofts project is located at the southwest corner of Q and 22nd Street. It's currently a vacant lot that's proposed for development. Historically, if we look at the project over time, council is not new to this project. The council committed over 1.2 million in home funds when it updated the action plan back in January 8th. Another component of those funds would be the issuance of bonds. Tax-exempt bonds issued by the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee are another component of project funding. In order for all or a portion of the bonds to qualify for tax-exempt bonds, the city of Bakersfield must do a couple of things. First, we must conduct a public hearing, as noted, oftentimes called a Tefra hearing. We also must provide approval of the seed lack issuance of the bonds for financing of the project, in this case, through the adoption of a resolution. Of note, there's no direct or indirect impact to the city, and there's no obligations on the city's part. Thus, staff recommends holding the public hearing, adoption of the resolution, and approval of the indemnification agreement. That completes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? No one in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or favor of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Oh, now you have your, sir, would you like to speak in support of staff? Were you just raising your hand?
I support it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
This is in Ward 2. I defer to Councilman Gonzalez.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Colleagues, I don't see any requests to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Councilmember Freeman.
I was under the impression, seeing Louis Gill tonight, that Louis, you were going to be making a request for support of the Bakersfield homeless shelter tonight. I received a call from you and others. Could you update us on if that request is forthcoming or when?
Councilmember Freeman, Mayor Louis Gill with the Bakersfield Homeless Center. I have submitted a request in writing to each of the council members and also forwarded it to the city manager's office. Had yet to complete my rounds to speak to each of the council members, but that request is before you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would, I would like to direct staff to analyze the requests from the homeless center and bring back to us their analysis by the next council meeting so we can understand it was, it's something we need to take action on in the short term. But I would like, from staff, information on how we can first know exactly what the funds will be spent for, how do we monitor that they got spent that way, some reasonable due diligence on the council's part for us to be able to make a prudent decision on this. So I'm hoping that you think that could be brought back to the next council meeting for the council then to decide one way or another on whether to grant those funds.
Thank you, councilmember. Staff is aware of the requests, and we've begun some of that due diligence, and we'll continue that and bring something back.
Okay. By next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Another, another direction to, actually, I think this should go to Budget and Finance Committee, a longer-term project. I'd like to have a recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee on how to handle this, we seem to have this request every year, and whether this should be incorporated into our budget, whether it needs to be these one-time-off requests that come each year, or whether it should be part of ongoing support that the city offers to the homeless shelter, included in our budgeting process. I'd rather have, not have to have a kind of a huddle every single year to decide what should our ongoing obligation be as far as, I think this is for operating funds to the homeless shelter each year. And I'd like some, an analysis of that and something brought back to council, you know, within a reasonable timeframe after it's been debated at Budget and Finance.
Thank you, councilmember, and I appreciate the sentiment of looking at the issue comprehensively. I've actually been in discussions already with staff about looking at all of the homelessness funding from the PSVS measure and looking at it comprehensively and collectively as a package so we don't take things as one-offs. And so we'll do that analysis and welcome the discussion at the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Two referrals tonight. I'm very happy to see Anna Laven here this evening and really pleased with the city and the county in building the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative. It's great progress for our region. I would ask, though, as we adopted this resolution tonight, that we develop a schedule for Mrs. Laven to come back and to brief the council on the progress, both in the formation and the development of the nonprofit in itself, as well as the continuum of care as we continue to build out that continuum. It's important for us to understand those gaps that exist even still and where we're succeeding, and then also the number of people that are actually experiencing homelessness in our community on a regular basis. And so I'd like to have those ongoing conversations with, with the organization as we move forward. And then the second referral is, there have been a number of concerns, I know, throughout the city, but certainly in Ward 2 regarding Airbnb's, both those who are operating Airbnb's and looking for a legal process through which they can operate them within the city of Bakersfield. This is something that's prevalent throughout the country, and I'd like us to develop a vacation rental ordinance, and I'd like to refer that to the Planning and Development Committee for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you. Kind of piggybacking off Councilmember Freeman's statement, do we have a policy or do we have something that, or could we make something that? I can see this nonprofit requests and these requests becoming more prevalent and more consistent. So do we have a policy that would automatically put in place some accountability for what's going to happen with that funds and some reporting mechanism back to us to where we don't have to do that every time that we're going to contribute money to a worthy cause?
Councilmember, fair question. The existing policy for making contributions or ongoing funding distributions to nonprofits has some limited language about those nonprofits providing us budget information about their organizations, as well as some limited reporting information. I would suggest that it's not robust, and I think it's a fair consideration to think about that in general, particular to this topic of homelessness and the homelessness funding that we'll be allocating from PSVS. I'm very interested in, as I mentioned, looking at it comprehensively, and then as we disperse those funds, having some expectations about reporting, as well as the city's operations around homelessness, so that we can see what those return on investment is for all of those PSVS dollars given out to each of the operators towards homelessness.
Okay, I appreciate that comment. But, and that applies to the homeless, but there are other areas in town that are going to be coming to us and requesting money. So if we could just put a policy in place about, you know, this is what we expect and you're going to have to account to us, and just something that, so we don't have to bring this up every time that we're going to consider handing money out to a worthy cause. Is that something we can do?
That is something we could do. If there's an appetite to have it referred to a specific committee, we could do that, or we can work on it as staff.
I, I'm, I'm fine if staff works on it and comes back and reports to us.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Weir. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just give one last thank you to our, to our former city manager, Alan Tandy. And now I certainly, we all welcome you, Christian, and appreciate you reaching out to each one of us. It's been a delight to, to have a one-on-one with you, and you have some great ideas and looking forward to a long stint in town, and we're looking forward to having you. So it'll be, it's very nice. It's gonna be a good fit, and anyway, welcome.
Thank you, councilmember Sullivan. Colleagues, anyone else? Seeing none, we stand adjourned at 6:01. Thank you, everyone.